Common order special meeting of the Montgomery County Veteran Service Commission. Today's December 20th. We're going to start with roll call.
Mr. Webb?
Here.
Mr. Meeks?
Here.
Mr. Isman?
Here.
Mr. Chapman?
Present.
Mr. Attkey?
Here. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. The purpose of today's meeting is to talk about the appointment process for Veteran Service Commission. We do have some time set aside for public comments. Is there anyone that has any public comments? So we do not have anyone with public comments. We'll move on to the topic of the meeting. Everybody should have, according to you, a packet of, basically a compilation of all of the letters and emails that are pertinent to our discussion of the appointment process. The last item on this list is an appointment letter that was received by the commission last night around 5:00, is that correct, Danny? Before 30, 5:00, we received a packet that shows that unbeknownst to us, unbeknownst to some of the judges on the court, last week, a majority of the judges on the court, the common pleas, made their appointment for the DAV position on this commission. And they selected Wilbur Shanklin to be in that role. This name is familiar to most of us because he is the individual that joined the DAV on October 27th. And basically it was the subject of a letter from Judge Huffman to David Weeks, the commander of Chapter 9 of the DAV locally, where that letter, in essence, demanded that Mr. Shanklin's name be submitted as a recommended member of the DAV to serve in this position. So that's, that's obviously a big update. I think it is unusual, as far as we know. I don't know if any, I don't think anyone here, I certainly wasn't appointed and sworn in almost a month before the seat became vacant. Not, can't speak to the judges' reasons for doing that. I have some assumptions, but that's just that, it's an assumption. So at this point, the purpose of this meeting was to discuss the letter that we had agreed to send out to the commanders of the posts and chapters of the veterans organizations in Montgomery County. The reason for that, as we all represent those organizations, we have recognized as a commission that the duties of the service organizations in making the, compiling the lists of eligible individuals from which the judges are to appoint to this commission, that that duty is basically being overlooked by the judges because of the actions of the administrative judge. So at this point, I'd just like to open up for discussion where we should go from here. And I'm just going to start it off by saying, I believe that we should take some kind of action to make sure that folks understand, back at our service organizations, what has transpired. We have no impact on the decision of the judges, but we do have an impact on the commanders and the members of the organizations that we represent and their understanding of the law. And with that knowledge, they then can stand up for what's right. I'll let you guys talk for now because I'm embarrassed to know what y'all think. I believe that as we discuss the letter going out to the post commanders, that we could have a discussion on the record. I think that is perfectly appropriate. I think that later on, once we've had that discussion about the letter, there are some potential legal actions to be taken. And at that point in time, I will ask for an opportunity to go into executive session. I'll ask for a motion to go into executive session. That's my point.
I believe, I believe this commission needs to set up a committee to further educate the commanders of different chapters and posts on their responsibilities as commanders to make sure that the representatives for this committee, that they appoint to this committee are in fact members of good standing, very active in the post, and that they abide by the ORC, the section that deals with the appointment process. I believe it's imperative that those commanders of each post are educated to know what their responsibilities are, especially their chapters, and the process in which they need to go through to make sure that the person they nominate cannot be challenged. I believe it's well within this commission's right to set up a committee to educate, as an outreach program, those chapters and posts that are appointed to this committee.
I think we identified 5901.03, letter G. Part of the organization and duties of the commission includes making reports to the organizations represented on the commission as provided in Section 5901.02 of the Revised Code and to others upon request. I would say that what you're suggesting is definitely within the bounds of our duties for the ORC. Any other thoughts? Well, obviously, we have a draft letter that's included in the packet. It's number 10, it's towards the end. Please take a look at that. I'll read through that real quick and then if you guys have some thoughts about how we might change it, what we might add, especially on the developments in the last 24 hours. We would address it to the individual commanders. In this case, it says Mr. Doe, generic. But Mr. Doe, the purpose of this letter is to inform you of recent events that relate to the process of appointing members of the Montgomery County Veteran Service Commission. These events have special relevance to you as the presiding officer of a post or chapter of a veteran service organization in Montgomery County. We're sharing this information with you so you are well informed of your rights and duties as an integral part of the appointment process. Unfortunately, with the information our commission has been able to gather, it seems these rights and duties are not being respected by the Court of Common Pleas in the execution of this year's appointment process. It describes the following timeline. August 4th, Administrative Judge informs DAV commanders that a list of three recommended names are due October 4th, 2016, and three names are submitted by DAV Chapter Commander David Weeks. October 20th, Administrative Judge informs DAV commanders that one nominee has decided not to participate and that the deadline to submit names has been extended to November 15th, 2016. October 27th, a week later, Wilbur Shanklin visits the DAV DA, turns in a $400 check, become a new member of the DAV and pay for a life membership, and approaches Commissioner Atkins to ask about appointments with ASC. Commissioner Atkins, who does not know the deadline to be extended, told Mr. Shanklin this year's deadline has passed and encouraged him to apply next year. October 31st, Administrative Judge sends a letter to DAV Chapter 9 Commander David Weeks demanding that Mr. Shanklin, who had just turned in his DAV membership days before, be nominated for appointment to the Veteran Service Commission. Our goal is to ensure that the roles of the service organizations and the Court of Common Pleas in the appointment process are understood and respected. ORC 5901.02 clearly states that, it quotes, "Appointments shall be made from a list of recommended persons," end quote, and that those recommendations, quote, "of persons who are eligible for appointment," end quote, are to come from the service organizations. The only time the court has discretion in making appointments is, this is quoted from the ORC, "if the judge does not receive any recommendations within 60 days after providing the required notification," end quote. Otherwise, they are bound to choose from the list provided by the service organizations. In addition, the ORC is silent on what actions must be taken if someone on a recommended list declines the opportunity. The court may extend any deadline it has set and offer to take additional recommendations, but has no authority to compel a service organization to provide additional names. Furthermore, the court has no authority to demand a particular individual be recommended for appointment. By doing so, the court effectively ignores the responsibility of the service organization in the appointment process and negates the check and balance that is clearly stated in the Ohio Revised Code. When the Administrative Judge wrote to DAV Chapter 9 Commander David Weeks referring to Mr. Shanklin, the court expects to receive forthwith the nomination of the individual who recently sought to be nominated. She exceeded the court's authority. When this overreach was brought to the attention of the Administrative Judge, the judge claimed that the court, this is quote, "has the ultimate duty and discretion in making appointments." The Administrative Judge then made it clear that she had no interest in discussing the matter and referred any future correspondence to the court's legal counsel, as the court will not engage in any further discussion of the court's exercise of its statutory duties. As representatives of all of the veterans organizations in the county, the Montgomery County Veteran Service Commission has attempted to discuss the developments in the commission appointment process with the court in order to better understand the court's actions, but our attempts have been rebutted. The only course of action available to us is to share the details of these recent events with the veteran service organizations like yours and ensure that each of you are aware that your independent role in determining which eligible veterans should be recommended for appointment to the Montgomery County Veteran Service Commission is in jeopardy. We've attached copies of all of the relevant correspondence to this letter, and each of us will be happy to answer any questions you may have for us regarding this matter or any other veterans issues you may wish to discuss. Thank you for your service to our country and your continued service to our community. Any thoughts on that letter?
Well, I think it's an excellent letter, well-written, and it really, I'm sure it bothers all of us on the commission, but it bothers me for the fact that somebody can say, hey, you guys put this name on, this name has to be one of your three members that you recommend. And it's telling guys like Korean veterans, Vietnam veterans, Iraqi, Afghanistan veterans. Yeah, you know, thank you for your service and thank you for fighting for this country, but doggone, when you recommend somebody for some, to be on a commission, you don't know what you're talking about. You know, it just, it bothers the hell out of me. So that you could, yeah, you expected, you're not expected to go fight for your country, but if you join the military, you're expected to die for your country. And every doggone one of us knows that, but yet you're not intelligent enough to make a decision. So that, that's another BS. And that's why this letter is needed. Thank you whoever authored, whoever was the author of this letter.
Any other comments, thoughts?
What bothers me is the fact that somebody who is appointed to this committee actually works hard and gets the tax dollars to the veterans that those tax dollars are meant to give. And they were punished by not being reappointed for doing their job effectively. And I just hope each and every one of you from this day forward takes that to heart and understands that the reward you do is making sure the veterans receive the benefits that they're entitled to, not the appointment to this committee. Thank you.
Is there, are there any comments in terms of support, non-support? Is this going, I mean, we've had some developments change in the last 24 hours. Is the draft letter good? Should there be some changes to it based on the actual appointments having been made coming out of the light at this point?
I think the letter should be sent. The only, the only amendment I would make to the letter is the dollar amount you put in the application fee of $400. That's based on age, and I don't know what age Mr. Shanklin is.
Okay.
So I don't know the exact application fee. It could have been $400, but it could well be a hundred.
We can strike that. We don't want to have an inaccurate.
The dollar amount of $400. I'm not sure what the amount was turned in with the applications based on age for life membership to the DAV.
Okay. Any other thoughts about additions or changes?
Okay, we want to educate the post commanders on what the correct procedures are. Is it really necessary to address all of the past happenings?
I understand what you're saying. I guess my thought in educating them on what has transpired is, you know, it's, I think most of our, I think most of the residents, not just veterans, but most of the residents of Montgomery County believe that the judges go to work to uphold the law, and they generally have a public influence. And when it comes to an assignment like this, where they're appointing folks to a board, that they are, that they have the best interests of veterans in mind. And unfortunately, what the events that have transpired over the last couple of months have shown, demonstrate, my analysis of these, is that there are other factors involved in this decision-making other than what is going to provide the best service to veterans in Montgomery County. And the problem is, is that most of us are naive to what goes on behind closed doors and in meetings that are outside of the public meetings. And I think there's, there's been a lot of that going on here, and that's why the only solution that I see to it from our position is to shed light on what has transpired. So I guess to answer your question, I feel like we should share the details of what has happened so folks know what to be on the lookout for and the signs that, our staff didn't even pick up on it. I mean, when, when our staff received some of the letters, some of the routine communication from the court, it didn't even jump out at them as being important. Yet, there were signals that if you knew what to look for, you could tell in those letters that something fishy was going on. And so that's, that's kind of my thought.
I think that the post commanders need to be made aware of the politics involved in this, because both my commander and the person that received the application for life membership, Mr. Shanklin, were clueless about what was going on. You can tell, if you sit down and tell somebody the story, you can see how they were played. I mean, this is just, you know, they did, they joined the membership just to be appointed to this board. It's so obvious. They were unaware of what was happening, transpiring at the time, because they're clueless about the politics involved in these positions that we all hold. Commander David Weeks doesn't know anything about the politics involved. Neither does Mr. Deck, the one who took the application for Mr. Shanklin. And I believe it would be our responsibility to educate them. These are political appointments. They're not appointments to help veterans. These are political appointments, and you know, they need to be made aware of that.
And I would also agree, because I could, I could take us back 10 years ago when I was appointed. Because we had to remember, the only reason he could not be on this commission, he was, he was moving out of the county. He was moving down there to, I didn't pronounce it, Ottervine. There was brand-new facilities down there. He was moving down there, and that's why he had to give up his position. And I was the president of Chapter 97 at the time. And we got a letter, a phone call from somebody in the county building saying, hey, you need to recommend someone to be on the commission. And I was the president, and I was, I was ignorant until we got to, too, but I don't really think of it. And I just ignored it. We was a Chapter 97, ignored it. We had no, well, basically, we had no idea what to do. We were told you need to, somewhere on that board, you're to appoint three names. And I ignored it. It was already in the January when the county called back and said, hey, you must do this. So I said, well, all right, I'll just, I'll pick three names. I think the first three people walked, I said, I'll put my name in, and the next two guys would come through the door. It was that simple. And so I put the three names in, because I had no idea what, what the job was, because the man, he was already gone. So.
So would it be helpful with the letter we put in, maybe a one-page sheet that just described, describes the process and duties?
I think that's important, to educate them on the process, include a sample of the resolution, which hasn't come yet. Tommy, you stated you were going to send that resolution out.
It's in the packet.
There is a resolution.
It's in this packet, if you will see it this morning. Thank you. Again, we want to educate the post commanders on the process. However, as a member of this commission, I don't think it does us any good to, quote, "play politics."
Well, you know, I don't like playing politics either. That's not what we're appointing, that's not what I was appointed for. I was appointed to make sure veterans receive the benefits they are.
Can I, can I ask a short fact question?
Sure.
When, when you say we shouldn't play politics, can you help us understand what you mean?
By writing in the letter, all of the details have transpired here.
I just, I just like to share my view that.
Sure.
I don't, I don't see shedding light on events that have transpired as playing politics, because what we're trying to do is shed light on a process that has gone, as far as I'm concerned, off the rails. And it doesn't matter whether it's local power politics or Democrat versus Republican politics, it doesn't, none of that really has any play, I don't think, when you look at what's transpired. The law was not following. And folks in positions of power have abused that power by basically demanding that folks do, do things that they didn't have to do. And so that's why I really feel that the details are important, because the only thing that a judge is going to answer to is a higher judge or the voters that have the opportunity to retain them or vote somebody else for the membership. And so our veterans are a big part of the community, and if our veterans are going to be treated this way, if our veterans organizations are going to be treated this way and basically swept to the side and ignored by the judges, because they have an idea that they're more powerful than the law, more power than the law gives them, then I think it's incumbent upon us to say something because we recognize it. And it's a situation where not everybody is going to get that this is a problem without having, without the details being explained, and that's why I think it's important. Any other thoughts? We're not in the public comment section, but since you're the only one here, yes, sir.
I wasn't going to say anything, but I thought I had.
Let me do one thing real quick. We had, we had a public comment section that had passed before I arbitrarily decided to open it up again. Can I have, can I have a motion? If I have a motion, a second, and we agree, then we'll open it back up for public comment. We can do that, if you have a motion.
Second.
All in favor by voice?
Aye.
Please proceed.
Thank you very much for this opportunity. Some of you might know that I've been involved in Dayton politics and for a long time, been for reflection issues pretty much 2004, 2005, we started the OB 108.
And I apologize. I know.
David Esraudi, 113 Bonner Street, Dayton, Ohio, 45410. I have had only really two interactions with the Veteran Service Commission when I first got out of the Army. I talked to somebody, but never actually came into the office. That was when you were on UWIT. And then when I was working with another veteran. I too applied to the judges the last time there was an opening. I was never interviewed. I was never called in. I was never called. I was never asked anything about my qualifications. So the one thing that bothers me greatly is that they said they had talked to one of the three people recommended by the chapter, and it was determined that that person wasn't really interested in serving. And so they demanded yet another person to be sent in. Why this time has there been such an interest and there wasn't last time? Because again, I had no interview. I just got a thank you very much, see you later letter. And Mr. Atkins was appointed. I think Mr. Atkins has done an amazing job. And I didn't apply again because I thought he'd done an amazing job, and I didn't see any reason to apply. But something seems very congruent here. And I do know Mr. Shanklin, have known him for a long time. I know his history, and I know how he works in this, within this city. And he sat on other boards that have had issues. If you want to go look at the history of premier management, former Metropolitan Housing Authority, I'm pretty sure it's his wife that works for the city. They've been connected with the IMA. I've never heard of any veterans, I mean, I go to Veterans Housing things, I go to other Veterans events, I've never seen them there, I've never heard anything, I never knew he was a veteran. And for somebody to come in, pay their money, demand to be appointed, and then to be appointed just reeks of political interference, and if anything, I believe personally, this is payback for knocking six people off this, six patronage jobs, basically by the county, off of this board, and affronts all veterans. I find this to be reprehensible. And I do agree with Mr. Webb that disseminating information to the post commanders is important because the newspaper will have a story about this long. The only place this information will appear will be on my blog, which it did last night along with the 25-page document. But my blog is read by 1,000 people a day, and Montgomery County has half a million people. So it's not exactly widespread or there for everyone to know it. And very few people actually care what goes on in these rooms, even though a lot of people like to say they care about veterans' issues. It doesn't make any, doesn't make the news, top of the story. You know, I was really surprised to see Channel 7 here. How many times have you seen Channel 7 here? Honestly. And, and did anybody invite them? They read my blog. That's why they were here. That's the only reason they're here. They all, the whole building, Cox, reads my blog, and they go out and get stories. Got it on the Q-Bay story, other things. But that I didn't get called back as a former applicant, you know, not that long ago? You know, if the judges wanted another applicant, that could have happened? Nothing. Was I notified that there was going to be an opening? No. This is purely political, and I wouldn't trust Wilbur Shanklin if he was the last man on earth, knowing him from what I know him over time. That's a personal observation, and that's, that's me. And I have no problem saying it, and I'll say it to his face. But I am deeply distraught by this kind of political gamesmanship, by judges who are supposed to work to a higher standard than the rest of us. And I'm not much of a joiner. I'm an American Legion member only because it got me a discount on my cell phone, okay? I don't join, I'm of the Grotto Marx School, I wouldn't have to be a member of any. anything, organization that had me as a member. Honestly, I, I, the only things I've ever joined have been things I've been, you know, heavily involved in, where I just, I have limited time and resources to do things, but veterans issues are very important to me, and I don't know if one, you know, one veteran service organization is more important to me than the other, they're all important to me. So, but I don't have the time to work on those and work on everything else I do. But I, I find this incredibly ridiculous, how this has transpired, and I wouldn't appoint Wilbur Shankland to anything if I knew his history and took a look at things. So I'm sorry, Mr. Atkins, I think you've done a fine job. I've said it, I've said it before, and I'll say it again. Appreciate what you do. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm sorry about this. It's not right.
So, am I correct in my understanding that we have some consensus on the letter? We'd like to add a description of specifically here the steps that you should expect to follow, to include the resolution requirement and things like that? Okay.
I'll just leave the name of that office real quick spot there.
On the resolution.
Right. And again, personally, I don't think it's really necessary to put in writing all the details of this that's transpired. It's unfortunate, it shouldn't happen, but I think that we are, it's commissioning ourselves. I think if we take the letters to our post, you can talk to the post commander. I think it's, make it quite clear in the letter, the steps that are required, copies that go ORC.
And this is an assumption. It's not by any means, I'm not speaking for anyone else, but if there's, if there's a consensus to go forward with the letter as it is and add specific steps and a resolution, are, would you be comfortable deferring to the group's opinions? But I mean, I guess I'm trying to.
The majority rules.
I understand, but I'm just trying to, I'm trying to gauge how strong you feel about it.
Well, it's, it's just my opinion, so.
I differ a little bit.
True.
My opinion.
That's fine.
And I'm not, I'm not sure, I can't speak for everybody else, but I guess the best way to do it is just, do I have a motion to go forward with the letter as written with the minor additions that we've talked about, to include a step-by-step process of what the post and chapter commanders should be expected to do, and to include with that letter basically the packet that we have, all of the background information, and get that into the hands of each post and chapter commander in the county?
Personally, I recommend we hand the letters to the various post commanders.
I make the motion that I continue the packet as is, we recommend that chapters, maybe I send them to each post commander. Is there a second? Mr. Meeks?
Obstinate.
Mr. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins? Yes. Mr. Webb?
Yes. Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you for your concern. So we have some marching orders. I will work on making those changes. Is there any other discussion for our public meeting regarding the appointment process and what's transpired so far?
I just like to say that I think every entity that we all belong to or associate with our appointment needs to have some educational program in mind, I believe. I believe the Ohio Association of Veteran Service Commissioners needs some kind of, I will no longer be on the education committee, but I will drop a line to the education committee and put a bug in the air about, about what's going on and what's transpired, but I would like to see that the Ohio Association of Veteran Service Commissioners has some kind of training on the processes, proper processes to be appointed, and not only the other chapters in, in post, but also this, this committee as well.
And again, since I represent the AMVets, I personally can deliver the letters to the AMVets post.
And I'd like to add, like you guys, AMVets, Legions, do all your members, are they residents of Montgomery County?
Yeah.
You guys have been, you guys, you guys do have people.
Sure.
Because our Chapter Ninety-Seventh, yeah, we have Clark County and Warren County.
Sure.
They're all over the place too. That's why I think this letter would be great. That's why I think the education process, how you recommended your three names to go before these judges would be really, really helpful.
Sure.
Because those guys that live outside of Montgomery County, well, most, a lot, a lot of the members, they have no idea what goes on in this commission, or what we do and what we can do for veterans, and a small percentage still doesn't even know, they don't know we exist even. And, you know, because I, I try to moan and complain and teach at our meetings what's going on here, and, but we're, but, you know, just a bunch of crazy-ass, reed-on veterans, you know, so.
Okay, any other, any other comments?
Comments, sir.
When I announced that, I was, I think the second district meeting that I went, I asked if, you know, as far as their own agenda to make reports and stuff, okay, I asked for that, and they have granted me I'm on the agenda. So prior to that, you know, there was nothing concerning the information that we had that contributed to the, to the commission. And again, we got posted, like two or three counties, okay, and the majority of the commanders understand the process, which is provide the names, period, okay? Then, of course, they have to write up an endorsement, so in the endorsement, which was something really special that they wanted the judges to know, it would be incorporated into that. But, I mean, there are active members of the post, and I'm sure once, you know, we get the information out, we'll know that in this particular case where a, a person contributes four hundred and something dollars to a veteran service organization, that person is named, is, I'm not going to say forced, but encouraged to send to the judges, okay? That's an issue. So I'm sure us providing the procedure and stuff, this would be avoided hopefully next time.
Sure.
But then on the flip side, you know, I could say it's, it's part of their process, so I'm maybe recommend to them, my opinion is that, you know, make sure you guys follow your own process. We encourage you to follow your own process, but then again, there's some things outside of their periphery that, you know, some recommendations came and they had to go along with.
Any other comments? At this point, I'd like to entertain a motion to go to an executive session to discuss pending legal action. Is there a motion for that?
I make the motion to go to an executive session for the purpose of pending legal actions.
Second.
Yes.
Mr. Meeks?
Yes.
Mr. Espan?
Yes.
Mr. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.